We're back.
Okay, so we'll move on to where...
It's freezing. It's cold in here. Is there any way to heat in this room?
Yes. Turn the thermostat off.
Couldn't have come at a better time. The temperature dropped. Okay.
Does it turn it off? No.
Just turn it off.
Okay, John. She did...
You need a sweater?
Okay, so, all right. We're off roof repair. We're finished with the roof repair.
Right. We're in elevator.
Well, a roof is a roof.
Well, the elevator. We're actually in the elevator.
Now, the elevator. The elevators have to be upgraded at ADA. And that's a matter of setting the lights and the bells and whistles. And literally, I mean, lights, bells, and whistles that have to go in. And the height of the controls have to be changed. And that's what that represents. Top of the hill, stormwater drain paving and jail. Now, what that is, is when you come up to the jail, if you come up on Friday, or if you take a drive-through, the driveway itself is, let's say it's 12 feet wide, 15 feet wide. The sheriff, over the years, had kept moving parking, if you were, on what was grass, which is now kind of a gravelly grass area. What I'm proposing is that we take and we pave that grass there, that gravelly area, and then control the water, the runoff that runs there into a storm drain into a pit. And that will prevent the water, which right now runs down across in front of the White House, and runs all the way down to success.
Yeah, falls right down there, yeah.
And it creates huge ruts up the hill. So, and since we're obviously going to be using the parking lot there more, that's what I wanted to do, to run across the top of the hill. Univents in First District is a case of going through the controls. The univents were all replaced by the state.
It's a univent?
It's a radiator, basically. A radiator creates a... You see them when you go over there. Depending on the size, they have fans in them, they have coils in them. So, the air, water goes through the coil, the fan runs, and you get air into the water.
To make sheltering.
Yeah. It's kind of like that.
Because it does cooling.
It does cool them. It's got two coils, and one for cooling, one for hot.
You're finding one with those.
So, the, and the unit, what happens is that the controlling valves on those only last for so many ups and downs, like 1,000 or 2,000 ups and downs, in terms of how the valve works. When the thermostat goes on, it goes up, when it goes off, it goes down. And we have to replace those. And there's quite a few of them, so that's what that is. The elevator indeed. The elevator, now that one might change. Both a combination of ADA and the state has now decided that, they like to go after old elevators all of a sudden. That elevator over there has been there since 1959, when they built the building, and it's passed every year. We maintain them every year. They go through. We have a service contract that works fine. This year, they've decided that, not only this year, for that building, but one of the first, well, the state has decided they want us to upgrade it. We upgraded, we started the upgrade with the $35,000 contract for ADA, bells, again, bells, whistles, and so on. During this process, they discovered, when they drilled a hole in the doors, that the doors were filled with asbestos. So, they decided that they have to replace the doors. That was another $6,000 addition to the $35,000. Then, the inspector, when he came down to go through this again, decided that, gee, golly, guys, we really need to check the governor on the top, we need to do some other stuff, we need a telephone in there, in case somebody gets in and gets stuck with the telephone. Instead of the alarm, you now have to have a telephone. And that's an additional $9,000 to go through all the latest requirements. And I'm at the point where, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Mark yet, but the $9,000 came through, and I said that we really don't have the money. We had the money for the 35, we had the money for the 6. We're doing it, which they're actually working on. That elevator's down right now for two weeks, while they're actually doing that.
What are you doing about handicap accessibility or nothing?
There isn't any right now. Well, they, actually, I shouldn't say that. There is ramps on the east side of the building, sorry, the west side of the building to get in, or extension is. There's a ramp to get in on the main floor. If you want to get to the top floor, there is no accessibility right now, so the court will have to accommodate and come down, if somebody with a wheelchair or has an ability to get up there. Unfortunately, we have no choice. It's, we have, it's going to be two weeks that it's down, and the state says, we're going to shut you down for two weeks, fix it.
So, you actually provide the service to the individual where they are?
That's correct. The state, the state will be, will have to come down.
And that's acceptable. And very even.
Right. That's acceptable. Right. So, we're looking at an additional nine grand for the, what the state wants us to do in terms of visually looking at the governor, looking at other things on that elevator. I'm trying to, I went in for a extension on that to cover it, because I've got it in here. It is about a month ago, and I'm shooting for an extension. If they give us the extension, then this will apply. If they don't give us the extension, then won't give us a approval to go back into service, then we're down until we fix it. So, that's one of the things. The state has become very aggressive on elevators of the last year. Again, this elevator has passed every year for the last 50 years, no problems.
Nice.
And, again, it depends on which inspector you get, and how he feels that day.
So, Mr. Otis's original design is probably the best.
It's the best. It's working. The only thing is, he didn't figure out ADA, and he didn't figure out bells and whistles and telephones.
Yeah, and I can see the telephone. I mean, I, you know, in some ways, that's a little bit more reassuring to know that somebody has heard you, and, because it's, you know, it's a panicky, I mean, some people get very claustrophobic, never mind ADA.
Well, it is. And you don't know if you push the buzzer, whether...
Yeah, is someone really listening to this, or is it just me hearing? So, I can understand that.
A lot of the things that they want are not, you know, are reasonable. And we've been doing those. What is unreasonable is the fact that walk in one day, and they say, you are not going to fix this, and we're looking at $30,000 or $40,000.
Right. They're on the spot.
And they want it done in 90 days. That's what they give you, is a 90-day win, where they fill it, and you get 90 days.
Those are the things to keep in, you know...
So, notations?
Notations.
Ready to move to that?
Sure.
Okay. So, this is where your budget's really changing?
That's correct. And it's, in some cases, it's not changing that much. If you go to page four, because that covers the, the transfer of funds from trailers to the old jail. We're taking the money that we had from the trailers, that we were actually using for the trailers, and we zeroed those out, and we moved it down into the House of Correction, the old House of Correction. That's where you'll, you'll see the electric bill, and the fuel bill, water, et cetera, working down, painting, and all the rest of that. That's, it's really, it's not a total swap, but we tried to just take the funds that I had from last year in the trailers and moved it over. There, you'll see an increase in, in that with the building maintenance, the equipment concrete, some of that stuff, obviously, the, just taking the house over, and as you see it when you come through, there are obvious repairs that have to be done. I mean, the sheriff was a great guy, but he really didn't spend any money on the building. And it shows. So, there are things that we have to do. As an example, I went through the, with the fire chief the other day, and, because we're shutting down the back of the building, of the three wings. And in order to shut it down, in order to meet fire codes, because you're shutting this thing down, you have to have certain, the doors have to work certain ways, you have to put locks and padlocks on certain things. We're sealing, basically, I'm sealing the wings off totally with padlocks or with deadbolts. And we have to go through, change some of the door swings and some of the other things, so people can get out. His concern is that if there's a fire in the back building, and, as I said, there's not much to burn back here, it's all brick and mortar and iron, but if, for example, a fire came, started back there, he would, he was concerned that his people would get locked in, could get locked in inadvertently. So, we have to change the locks on the doors that allow you to go from the center core to the wings, so that his people can't get locked back there. The other issue was, you can't leave the doors open, because if, in case of a fire, you don't want somebody inadvertently, whether it's a public or somebody else wandering through the building, and you don't know whether they're not. So, for headcount purposes, you have to lock the doors to get out of the core into the wings. Those are some of the issues that we go through, that I have to go through in order to make the building usable for our purposes. In addition to that, we have to clean the building. There is trash everywhere. I shouldn't say everywhere. There is trash in a variety of different locations in the building that we have to get out, because that's burnable. So, we're going to be loading up. I have to get a dumpster, we'll get, hopefully, I can get the prisoners and the community corrections people to give us a hand on loading all this stuff that you left in there. And there are sections where they just left, primarily equipment, but trash and different things. So, we have to get that out. Painting, and some of the painting and different things, you'll see when you go up there, it needs to be painted, so that when the new folks come in, it's pleasant. I don't know, talking anything fancy without you paint like this, we use this, but it's just freshening it up. Carpeting, we're going to be doing some of the carpeting. My folks will be going up this week or next week to shampoo the rugs, so we can get a better determination of how good the rugs are, and whether they're acceptable, both safety-wise and cleanliness-wise. So, that's, that reflects the cost in this. And I must say that in this old jail section, if you will, it's a guess, in real terms. We're guessing what the heat would be, because what they did and how they ran the system is not how we're running the system. And we've cut it back dramatically in terms of the cost, just by shutting lights up. And so, we're reducing down. So, we're guessing that this will cover it, and that we will be making a savings. I think it would be less expensive to heat it than those energy hogs that are up there at the moment, in terms of trailers. So, that covers the, on the notation, you see an increase in items. We're talking about an estimate of $27,000, an additional cost.
And that's for the jail part?
Right. That's for the jail part.
And how about the higher utility costs? What is that related to?
Well, we haven't had an upgrade in our utility cost in two years, three years. And unfortunately, as you know, utilities run out.
It's just the rate is based on the rate.
So, now, for electric, you have a fixed rate, so you should be able to project, by going through each of your usage, you should be able to project the bill, you know, pretty close.
Right. Maybe we're not that far off, but we just, we haven't had an increase in that line, of those line items, for about two years now, because we've been pretty, just running a...
When did the contract start?
It starts this January.
This January.
And it replaces for all of next fiscal year.
So, right now, it starts?
Right. So, you should be able to, for next fiscal year, you know, lock in two-thirds of your utility, your electric utility budget, and the other, you know, just assume, never goes down, so assume some kind of increase on your regulated side of your bill, and you should be able to be very close.
Right. Now, some of these things also, you'll see the increase is, reflects, we needed, for example, last year in the public service building, old BCI, we zeroed out last year. My thinking at the time was, we were going to shut it down. Well, we didn't shut it down. We kept it running all year, and so we're still running power through there, electric and heat. And there are no costs reflected in last year's budget, because it was zeroed out. And I've been working with Mark, and we've been, you know, from supplementals or kind of transfer funds to cover that. So, this year, I put in under, under the new BCI, I put in just for the heat and lights. So, we have some money in there.
When you're speaking about the electricity clause, you know, it's a $6,000 increase that you get in here for the White House, the RDO. It's an enormous increase.
The RDO runs off, it's one meter, it runs off both the trailers and the RDO.
Okay. All right. So, it's not just the White House?
No.
No. The trailers are electrically heated.
Right. So, we're moving away from those. The trailers will end, I'm hoping, and again, this is all, we're also planning, the double wide will be going into the house fairly directly. The other two trailers, June, July, I think the lease runs up, and they, we're going to move them in, get rid of them all.
Will that meter then be just for RDO? Will you be able to isolate it?
Yes.
So that we can pursue the PV installation and net meter, because that was kind of an issue.
That's correct. Yeah. That'll be, that meter will strictly feed the White House.
So, that parking lot where the trailers are may be PV installations, so don't...
Terms of space, you mean?
Yes. Don't keep your eyes on my space. Because that's direct, that's southern exposure, so we need space.
There are several very inexpensive solutions for monitoring, you know, several loads. Even a Watt Nest or whatever this one is, any type of, let's see, a transformer, split transformer base type of thing, you might buy one and use it, so to spread it around to get your, to get your figure of merit.
So, we, that, the additional cost was, was for that. It was an upgrade. Now, I also put in for additional contracts, contractual, as an example. We, last year, we zeroed out contractual for the White House, for, for the pole and BCI again. Last week, as an example, the lights burned out on the poles of the cove. Those are pole lights. It costs $600 to change the light bulb, because you've got to get a crane in, or you've got to get a lift in, which we rent. They'll go up and change the valves, and get the light. It's a safety issue, so you can't go and just blow it off, you've got to do it. That's what this reflects. Since we zeroed out, I had no money in that account to cover the cove, to go out and change the light bulb.
You're talking about a streetlight picture?
Yes. Pole lights, out on, out on the parking lot.
Yeah. So that people can play out.
And it's the same with the pole lights that we had up the hill. We have pole lights up the hill, but we've now taken over from the sheriff. You have to go in, and you have to replace the pole or the pole lights.
Right.
For the safety. Now, to get to that light, it's 20 feet above the ground.
John, I, I have to be a product manager for lighting controls and streetlights.
Well, it's not the bulb or the bulb that really costs. It's getting to it.
It's getting up. It's getting up in the air.
It's amazing.
So, the $600 reflects, when you take all of the contractual out of that account, the lineup, by lineup, I mean, the lineups in that building, which we did last year, in order to try to cut down, where, what it points up is, oh, wait a minute, we have to change some of this. It's not taking care of the building, but the building is in good shape, so it's not, it's not taking care of the building per se. It's those little things that catch up. You know, changing the dishwasher out there, or changing some of the stuff that they have, that they want. They call you up and say, you gotta do it. Well, that's great, but I don't have any money to do that. So, that's what these reflect. It's not, we tried to level fund everything across the line, but I did put in for those items, for those areas that we're finding that we needed, we were short on money, in order to cover that. BCI, again, I don't know what you want to do on BCI. I did put in to cover the heat and the lights that we're covering now minimum, and that's about it. And we still have funds there that we're not doing anything with.
It's possible we may know something in the month of February.
So, say they get the award in February, they probably can start by, you know, the end of this fiscal year, start renovations.
Don't they have to go through DCAN if it's over?
No, they don't.
No.
The way it's being structured.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You have a question?
I'd like to go back to the streetlight.
Okay.
All of the towns that have street, or have bought the streetlights, have a contract. I think it's either Republic or...
Republic. But that's for replacing bulbs and magnets.
Right. Okay. But I'm wondering whether or not we could hook onto one of the, one of those contracts, because the, you know, the price we used to quote for going up in the air is between $500 and $100, for the, you know, the utility company's kind of the bucket truck to do that. And I'm wondering whether or not we could hook onto one of the contracts that those towns have for, you know, for maintenance, streetlight maintenance, to see whether or not we could, I don't know how many we're talking about.
Well, we have quite a few lights. The, two things that come to mind, I mean, first, we have a contract with an electrical contractor that handles all of our work on that end. That's one contract that's there. The other thing is that I don't, if we have two or three lights in the parking lot here that are out, and we rent a lift, go over to Coastal or wherever and rent a lift, I multitask, I use, it takes how long to change the light bulb? It takes, you know, five, 10 minutes to change the actual one you're out there. You drop the thing down, and then you go, and you do everything else that we've been holding off on, in terms of getting up, such as using the corner of this building on the roof. We have shingles that have blown off, and different things we had to correct there. So, we utilize, that same $600 gets used to cover that. So, we do other things. So, it, you try to, you try to coordinate your time, so you can get as much out of that unit.
I get that part of it.
So, in order to have a contract, yeah, I hadn't looked into that, because it works twofold for me, you know? Take advantage of it.
When you, when you change the bulbs, is there, is there an opportunity to, I don't know what they are now, but to change them to those energy-saving type bulbs?
They all are.
They all are. What do they call them?
Well, I'm not sure if these are CFLs or floods or T. I don't, I don't know what kind of light it is, but they're all...
Yeah, they're all...
They're all energy. Yeah, everything's been run through.
They're governed by the incandescent...
Incandescent. Oh, that's one. Okay, they're not any of those.
They're all gassy, the gas balance.
So, again, everything that you notice, the upgrade, and how much we've kicked up is, covers those contracts, all that we add in for the different buildings. I don't know, for example, how much would the BCI building or the Public Safety, if they take it over, how much are we going to be responsible for after they take it over?
Well, that would, we've negotiated in the lease, right?
Yeah. That's kind of the question I was getting at, is like, so, they get their award in February, say they start the, you know, construction piece by the end of this fiscal year. I can't imagine it's going to last, if you're, the renovation that I think they're going to plan on doing, fairly substantial, it's going to last a year anyways.
Yeah.
So, that takes care of this year. I'm not saying that, you know, there doesn't need to be some heat and electricity in there, there probably does, but I'm not sure that then that question you're asking is relative to this budget, or maybe the next budget. How much are we going to say? How much is theirs? How much is ours?
Now, the other thing...
And I would argue, John, it's probably going to be based on square footage. What square footage are they going to have? What are we going to have?
Which makes sense. Same thing we do here. The other thing, of course, part of this building is that we keep the power on. We have to have the power on for the tower. Now, they pay for that, but we have, we're just going through now, dividing up and separating that tower room and the computer room that the sheriff is still paying for. There's a section of that building that is, that houses his electronics equipment.
For what?
For the communication tower.
Oh, for the tower?
It's for the tower.
Oh, okay.
And so, we're separating that now, so that we have the ability to just pay for our, our portion, if you will, versus trying to guess and separate what's there now. And also, for the generators to run. And we've been, over this last year, we've been separating the generators all along the way, and everything that he had up there that was on his nickel is now on our nickel. Which brings me to the one other thing, you'll find an upgrade here on the water. The water cost for the, for up the hill, it's one of these, these old things that has been here for years, but there's one meter that comes off of Railroad Ave that feeds everything on the top of the hill. Actually, I mean, I should say, there's one pit. In the pit, there are two meters. One meter is a four-incher, and the other meter's an inch and a half. The inch and, and I argued with the company, with the water company, because they're hitting us for $400 a quarter for that four-inch meter, which they had for the House of Correction. So, we don't have the House of Correction. I don't need the four-inch meter. Get rid of it. Let's go back to the one and a half inch, which is only a $150 quarter, quarter charge. We need, they refused to do it, because the hydrant that's sitting in front of the White House is also fed from that main line. So, if we wanted to move the hydrant, and we want to do some other things with the hydrant, to cut it down, which would cost $2,000 or $3,000 to do all this, then we could unload the four-inch meter that's sitting in the pit.
It's $400 a month, $400 a year.
Quarter. It's a quarter for that meter.
They can't do fire suppression on a one and a half inch?
No, no, it has to feed, it has, we would have to feed this, what they would, they feed the hydrant, and we would, I said, oh, we'll take the meter out of there, and then put the meter over here, on the, on the downside, if you will, or the upside of the hydrant. So, we're not paying for that. But again, in order to do that, we're looking at $2,000 to $3,000 to move, to dig the hole, put the thing, and put the pits in and everything else. And we're also looking at running a whole new lineup there anyway, so it became an issue. But that's what the cost reflects. It also, we're also paying for all the water in the bills here, for the House of Correction. It's now reflected in here, and there's a water sewer charge. And it goes through the new BCI building, which we are paying, and we have to, their water usage is so small, it just doesn't make any sense to try to get a new meter in up there and break it down. It's, it really doesn't make any difference, but we are paying for that water, and we'll be paying for the water on the new BCI, or the new communications building, or the old communications building.
So, that $1,050, John, you have, you know, what does it get us again?
That gets us the service, basically. It's a, it's a charge that they, they charge us just for having it there.
Okay, so it's not from...
It has nothing to do with usage.
Okay. It's like an auxiliary.
They, as again, I tried to argue with them, I said, come on, you know, give us a break in terms of, we're not utilizing the water. We have to have it.
This is the water company you're dealing with, right?
This is the water company, and they said, well, we don't have a, we don't have that within our budget.
Oh, we might?
Oh, that's a different question. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that yet.
And since we're on water, I also separated all the water out of the farm. It's now that we separated, so we're getting a bill now for the farm house. And Tim is now being charged for the fields and all the water, the heat that he's using. So, that is, that works, works in our favor, and it was, everything, the beam hall is all tied in at once.
So, I think the only thing left to talk about is the RASTA area.
Yes.
Now, I asked Eileen this morning, we're going through that and preparing to come up here, whatever we worked out last year, and by that I mean, whatever the money that came in covered us. We were covered, it worked out in terms of our cost for sending our people out there to clean it, and work there, and the supplies, and so on. So, the amount of money that was generated, or that you were able to get through, be the license plate or whatever, fund, was sufficient to cover, and I suspect it'll be sufficient for this coming year.
But that covered from...
That only covered part of the year.
Yes. It covered from when they did it, from like July 1 on...
To October. Didn't through the May and June.
No.
Because we had the previous year's budget that was still available.
Yeah. So, we might be short. So we might be short.
Well, that's what, we're actually in a different, we're in the opposite situation this year, because we don't have any money for the May to June 30.
Right.
And then we're talking about...
Right, we need to extend them back or bring it back, if they want, because we opened it up on Saturday, and they're going to open there. My preference would be, as it always is, is not the door.
Yeah, to do it, of course.
But, that being said, the way it worked last year, if, if we could get the additional funds, it doesn't come off my, doesn't come out of my, out of my account, and it works in terms of coverage.
We've had some preliminary discussions about how to fund the use.
Well, we talked, actually, you can read the meeting at the, is that the golf club there, the Bridge, not Bridgeview, Bayview, is the name of it?
Brookside.
Brookside. And we've got a number of meetings, I think, and, you know, we're trying to come up with alternatives on how to fund this. Unfortunately, nobody's got any money right now. So I think the only way you're going to get this funded, in the manner that we have operated in the past, which is basically...
License plate one.
Is, is license plate one. So we approached Dave Willard and Felicia with that thought at this point in time.
And we'll see what happens.
It's just not going to be...
We don't have any answers right now.
And of course, the big thing is that that's the only place for taking it from the safer way.
For anybody driving down a place.
Between the canal and Province Town. There's no other place to stop, we could go, you know, get off and...
Well, the argument had always been to go up at Burger King.
Yes.
And, and the Chamber of Commerce office, the building right there.
Right, the visitor's center.
Yeah, the visitor's center.
Oh, yeah.
You could, I mean, you can get off anywhere and go...
Well, you can, but I mean, they, the argument had always been, what was close, what was convenient, and that was convenient.
The other interesting thing is that although the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce has the, has an office there, I think the property itself is invincible.
It is invincible.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, you're right. It is invincible, although the Yarmouth group uses it and they manage it and, and fund it. I mean, they're a portion of it, but not the rest, not the rest area portion.
I guess, I don't know, you know...
Well, the state closed down the rest area on 25.
Right, they closed it for the season. Now, whether that opens again or not, I have no idea.
And the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, paid a hefty price to help keep that open.
I believe it is.
On Route 25.
Not going down here, because I think we missed, but maybe...
No, they gave us...
No, but I'm saying, if you're coming down 495, you're saying right now, you know, there's no rest area between the Bourne Bridge, basically, and then you come up to 6, and, you know, anywhere down the Cape. Who knows what's going to happen with that Route 25 rest stop, I have no idea.
Well, as important as that is, as far as people coming to the Cape, I think our concern has to be, what do people do once they're on the Cape?
Right, right. But it may be, I'm just saying, it may be, you know, who knows what they do with 25, maybe farther than that. It may not even be a Cape issue, maybe even getting to the Cape.
But that was the year round.
It used to be, it was the first season, the winter season that they had closed.
That's right. And there's been a fair amount of pushback on that as well, but the state isn't funding it at all.
And by the way, other states, if you, if you do the foreign, to Florida, to, you know, to...
They're all...
The corridors are all, Virginia's, is cut down all of their, you know, all of its support, and we're sort of small potatoes in comparison to the state. I don't think we, I, I don't think we've had any evidence that the state would come back and support us. I don't think that the, I've had any evidence based upon what's happened so far, that any of the chambers of commerce would, would, would require their members to support that as an activity that supports local businesses.
Well, we suggested that, and, you know, maybe in my mind, I had vision, maybe you could ask them for a thousand piece. I think Bob Dubois said, if you got from half of them $250, you'd be doing real well.
Because we tried that, we tried to do that last year.
Yeah.
And they, they were already seeing cutbacks in, in their funding, and there wasn't any way.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact...
Particularly in Province Town.
Yeah, one of the responses from the small, so-called small chambers of commerce was that we should be sharing the license plate money with them, because they, they wanted to, you know, to have the distribution of it, and felt that the large chamber of commerce should put more money into those sorts of things.
Well, I sense that the legislation doesn't provide for that.
So it's, so it's a continuing problem, and we have to resolve it by...
Well, we have to come back at another meeting fairly soon.
Yeah.
And because we're looking at it at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And this is January, so...
Right, so for this budget, you'll have to resolve that for the July 1 timeframe, but yeah, you have this May issue.
We also have to resolve the May-June, the May-June issue.
So fairly quickly.
Yeah. All right, so we don't have an answer for you on that yet, but we will, so, but it wouldn't be your funds anyway.
No.
It would come from someone else.
So we've decided, at least at one hearing, is that we're not going to concern ourselves with being that as light out within this budget.
Right. Well, from county funds.
Right, from county funds, right, yeah.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't add to his total, if we added to his total...
It would add to his total bill. How we've found out in the past is, we've included it in John's budget, so he can pay the bills, basically, and then what we do is, we do a fund transfer, we do a transfer of the money that was spent here out of the license plate.
The tricky part with that is, we have to make it clear, when, you know, when the budget goes through there, that this is something that has been transferred for that purpose.
Exactly, and I think the question will be, what do you see prior to the final development and submission of his budget, you know, is the answer yes or no?
Yeah.
It's, it has great visibility, it's, and I've gone up and down on it, but the bottom line is that if it isn't there, it causes more problems than if it is.
And I think we should find out if Yarmouth is, their chamber is actually going to staff that again, this visitor's center, based first, because if they're not even going to staff it, then that, that may send us in a different direction.
It's got a new building out there, I would think he would staff.
You would think so, but, you know, the funding issues are really tough, so...
Although in some extent, it is a separate issue.
It is, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's run totally separate from us.
It's a separate issue, whether, you know, you still, you know, the question will still be, if they don't choose not to staff their information center...
Right.
We could still open the rest.
Absolutely, yeah, no bearing on what we're doing.
No, but if, if you had, if we had to close it, there, it wouldn't, it isn't like there'd be a visitor's center there, and people stopped and...
That's right, yeah, 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 right.
You would never want to do it if, if they were open.
Right.
But if they were closed, it gives you a little more room to consider what our options are.
Options are, right.
What else would you like to add?
The last thing under notations was the extension of the farmhouse. There's a few extra funds put in there, because we picked up the additional building out there, which is the maintenance garage, and that needs work. We're working on to redo that. Bill Clark has his, a lot of his extension materials that he uses for his clam, all his clam and scalping and oystering and stuff out there, they keep all that material. In conjunction with the farmhouse out there, we have one bay that we use, and then they, the rest of the building is handled with Bill's operation, as well as the greenhouse in back of it, which we take care of. The rest of the property out there is all under the, under the lease. But that's what the additional funds for out there reflect, so it's, again, I tried to keep everything as it was, but only add it on where we needed to, the obvious, the obvious things that we needed.
Do not really expand there, except where necessary.
Right.
Yeah.
And the only, the only real expansion, if you will, or initiative, would be the additional need for the custodian.
Right.
And keep in mind, it's only $13,000.
Right, that's good, yeah.
And I know it's only $13,000, but it's, you know, it's better than the whole.
It's $13,000 and a promise from the state.
Yeah, yeah, good luck, right?
John, could you do for me, you know how when you have, are facing a deficit in your heating or electrical accounts, you do that analysis of all the bills? Could you do that for the heating and electrical accounts, so I could take a look at that, and then based on what Maggie is saying, kind of try to come up with some projections about what we really...
You'd need the KWH usage for each building annually, that's what you should have, starting by month, what your...
Although I looked at that last year, and it varies, it's fairly variable.
Right, but just take an average, do the average for the last five years, if you want to do an estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, no, we can, we have that, so we can put that together. I mean, the buildings are pretty consistent, but it does, I mean, as far as our use is consistent, the cost varies, the, depending on what the rate would pay, but the...
Now you know the rates.
You know, I was going to say, actually, I thought I looked at it, because...
The KWH for HD changes because of the, what kind of summer you have, something we have...
It's variable, yeah.
That's what he's asking for, you'll need for each building, by, you know, five-year an average by month, so that Superior Courthouse, over the last five years, in the month of January, it uses X kilowatt hours, and go on all, do for all 12 months, for all the buildings, and then you can make a projection.
Yeah, we can get some come out here, okay.
All right, we'll wrap that up, thank you very much, John.
And as I say, we're going to be up, Mark was saying, we're going to be up there on Friday, if you want to...
Yeah, that sounds, so 3:15, right?
About 3:15, yeah. I asked Lou to come by at 3:15 here, and then he's going to drive up, and we'll...